...started before they have to come into the city or come see you and be different. You press and so.
All right, now I see where you're going with that. So you have, we have, it's not necessarily the permitting process, it's the overall from pre-construction meeting through final inspection, the process. But I think the last time I was here, somebody brought that up.
I think it'll be thorough if we get eight, I mean, it's not supposed to be over the next week to get eight through Z gun.
There's somebody proposed an actual process.
Yes, that's on the next, next thing on the agenda item.
Okay.
Item eight.
Well, how about this is contingent upon establishing said process. If you want to make a motion that that information we've provided online, then I think the mayor will work with an IT company to make that happen.
It's not even a.
Does that make any sense?
No, it's because it's not IT related, right? We, we have a, we have a simple form, so currently right now we have a form. We have a form or a process on if you walked in the door, someone would give you a form or talk to you through this process.
Yes.
And we're simply saying we want that online.
Which is an IT problem.
Which.
I couldn't do that. I had no idea to put that piece of paper on the computer.
Well, it's just a PDF that people can print out.
Do you know how to write the code to have it on your website?
We have two, we have so many people, we have, we have.
We don't though.
But it's the process is a simple process.
But Brown, we haven't even, so we talked about this process, right? We ran into an issue in which we felt like the process wasn't even followed.
That's correct.
So when we present this, who says that this process is even going to be followed? When, when, if we could work thorough and do as, as he, as he gave to us, we moved to assess this.
Well, you just want it online. You want to the stuff we.
There, there has to be a process right now. So if I wanted to decide I wanted to develop today, there has to be a process already where I could go say, hey, Mr. Mayor, I would like to build whatever here. He's going to hand me a stack of whatever I need to do so. Instead of what I'm saying is whatever that is that he's going to, it may have followed, that's a totally separate issue.
Y'all kind of have the same.
There's a process in place already. I'm saying that information needs to be available online.
We, we should be able to follow, and, and I agree.
Well, it makes sense.
It's, it's an old thing, but we'll see if we can't put what we have online. I get with Judge Alexander. Okay, make a note for me to stick it, please, so I won't forget.
I'll be right back.
I get with Judge Alexander, just to put the forms and paperwork that we give out for permit online. I spoke with her and I forgot what she said, but.
I don't think, Mayor, I don't think you're quite getting to where Mr. Randall's going with this.
I thought he wanted what we hand out online.
Well, he wants to establish whatever the process is, and I will say this, Ms. Randall, I don't think there is one.
No, I'm not, I didn't, I didn't say establish the process. I said there's a process that's already in place.
I don't know if there is.
There's information.
No, no. Hold on, hold on, Councilmember has the floor. Go ahead. Let me check.
People have been developing, it had, even though there hasn't been a ton of development, people have been developing in the city over the last ten, twenty years. They have to have been following some sort of process. There has to be some information that says you need X, Y, and Z. There has to be that information readily available to where they've, they've been coming to City Hall. Ms. Dickey, am I right? People come to City Hall and ask for information about if I want to develop, and you hand them a packet, I'm presuming, right?
Absolutely.
I'm saying that packet should be online so they can just print it out, and when they walk in the building, they can already have it filled out.
And that's the only one, that's why I said, well, have Judge do. I, I agree with you.
Now, if we have an issue with the current process, that is a, that is an issue. That's not what I'm talking about.
Right, we're going to look to put what you said, let me hand out online, that's all.
Yes.
First, we have to discuss, consider and take action to both of our plans going through our plan. But all I'm saying is that, Councilmember, I get what you're saying, but we as councilmembers don't even know that process. So we go off trust and we write policy, which we've been talking about that all day long. We write policy, we set policy upon the issues in which we face. So now I, I feel as though we putting ourselves in, in the same predicament in which we've been going through by allowing, none of us know the process in which, in which to go through approval, so why would we just say, oh, just put the link up there, when we don't even know the process? Instead of, we can make the process and be comfortable with whatever we put out to our citizens to be able to go through this process. So that way we won't have the same issue with Panther Hill, same issue, all the questions that we have concerning the cricket field, so that way we won't keep running circles. Like, the idea and suggestion is great, but we, we don't have the information to just say, oh, well, I'm, we're just saying, I'm pretty sure there's a document, so let's put the document online. Instead of saying, let's make the document and then put the document online, because nothing, none of us know what this document is. We're just going off assumptions to say, hey, we, we think there's something out there for us to go off of.
Ms. Dickey.
Yes, sir.
Please email the permit packet to all the council. I know some of them are new, but let's, let's send it out to all of them, and we're going to look to have Judge Alexander post it, and then as council wishes to make corrections, changes to it, we'll address that at that time, but let's give them what we have, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Councilman Jones, I, I think what, what Randall, Councilman Randall trying to say is that whatever we have now, just post that on there and we can modify it while it's there. So if we change the process, you know, we'll just change the link with the, with the new uh, whatever permit that we choose from. It is, for now, until we have that established, you know, help you, you know, make it easier to get to.
We wouldn't put that in the contract. I'm sure what.
I, I can make a motion. Our motion that we accept, um, that we accept to create a link on the website to search for the building permit requirement.
Okay, second. Okay, it's been properly moved and second that we create a link on the website to search for the building permit requirement. You've heard the motion, ready for the questions?
Of course.
All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Let the record go as you have it. Item eight, discuss, consider and take action on the city's contract and adopting the development process that Bureau Veritas uses with other cities. Councilman Wallace and Councilman Rowland. I combined those because both of you had similar crossovers with Bureau Veritas, so we could discuss it at the same time.
You do con, you're doing, talking about contract? All right, I'm not, I want to talk about contract.
Counsel and citizens, so we, as Councilman Jones talked about this, have talked about this for some time, specifically when we were trying to get some things together. When Mr. Christopher Haver was here, I did some research, and Bureau Veritas has a process. Bureau Veritas is our third-party contractor. They have documents that say the city X, Y, and Z, and they lay out the process. The point of why I wanted this on the agenda is for us to approve the current three documents that I submitted to everybody August 3rd, went to Ms. Dickey. There wasn't any copies in people's packets, but I'd also, I sent it to everybody by email, so I don't know if everyone still has them or if we need copies. In, in that process, they talked, it was three things. One was the commercial new remodel package. It has Bureau Veritas at the top, and then it has your company, says, this says the City of West, so if anybody want to look at what I'm talking about. So it'd say the City of Prairie View, you have our logo at the top, and then it says Bureau Veritas contact information, because they're the permit, they're the people who gets it. It says permit submitted, plan reviewed. It gives their contact information, and it has the City of Prairie View in addition to it. Goes through the process as far as plan review, inspection results, field inspection. It has a checklist on what you need to do for your site plan, your parking lot layout, your grading plan, your commercial, energy codes, site plans, TDR, TDLR, and then on the third page, it says commercial permit application, and everybody should have a copy. And it's similar to what we have, but it goes into a little more detail, and then it also has on the fourth part, it says commercial permit submitted requirements. Again, it has prices, figures, and specifically what any developer, anybody who wanted to build a home, remodel a home in the City of Prairie View, it has this process, the contact person and all that information. It says also they need to provide a copy of driver's license and state licenses. It's a five-page document, and this is what, these are one of the items, one of the three items that I'm wanting us to adopt. All we're simply doing is taking off the City of West and putting the City of Prairie View, because Bureau Veritas has the same process.
Which document?
A commercial new remodeling package. The second document is called the Certificate of Occupancy Inspection Information. That's a two-page document. It, it has the city, if you say I have the City of Prairie View at the top, it says City of Occupancy Inspection Information, and it goes down, what you need to do, process, time, phone numbers, and how you get a certificate of occupancy. We currently have a process, but it's not written, and this helps us to streamline and us to be able to have an application. It has an application page that, again, is two pages that we get and Bureau Veritas get. That's two pages. That's the second document I want us to approve. And then the third document is, this says Bureau Veritas process and information. It says Bureau Veritas because they're the one processing all this, and so this is, it's a two-page document, and it just says, it reads, "The City of West has received many questions in regards to plan review and inspection companies." Bureau Veritas. This document will explain the reason for using Bureau Veritas, as well as the process residents and contractors will go through when dealing with them. And it gives the three, four paragraphs in its two pages, contact information. Those are the three documents that I wanted us to accept that will streamline our process that we can then go back to make sure we have policies if people don't follow that. But these are the three documents that Bureau Veritas has in multiple cities around the state of Texas, and all we're doing is we want the City of Prairie View to adopt these documents, put on our website like we just voted to do, and move forward.
Now, Councilman, do me a favor. If you would just give the title of the three documents real quick for the record.
Um, the record, oh, okay. The, the first one is Bureau Veritas Process and Information. It's a, it's a two-page document.
Okay, next one?
Next one is Certificate of Occupancy Inspection Information, and that's a two-page document.
Okay. Well, Council, you can't talk unless the public can hear us. They have to be able to hear us. We can't. We can't whisper. That's my point. The record has to be, go ahead.
And then the third document is a five-page document. It is Commercial New Remodel Package, and all these are PDFs that are printed off their website, and all I'm saying, and it has your, the form where people can print it out and write it in and submit it, the same process that we want to do. Now, if we want to get fancy and make it fillable and all these things, then we may need some IT people, but just to put this on the website, we don't need none of that.
Okay, you all done?
I'm done with that part.
Okay. I'm confused because I'm looking at a document three years ago, when, when you were on the council, and it's signed by my predecessor, Mayor Frank Jackson, November 24th, 2015. It's our contract with Bureau Veritas. If we already have a contract with them, I mean, we're talking about changing and altering the contract and using what somebody else uses, we already have a contract with you.
I, I don't know enough about that yet, but we, I think they had two separate issues, but.
Well, he wants.
It doesn't make, yeah, go ahead.
So first, what I was talking about had nothing to do with the contract. It had to do with us being in a position today to make a decision on how citizens and people who wanted to do development in the City of Prairie View needed to operate. I'm not talking about what you, what, what happened six years ago, what happened to mark today. I'm saying that we, this body, you being the mayor, and this city council, make a decision to adopt this process that currently exists, so now residents and everyone can now have a current plan process that we will upload on the internet.
Councilman, this is the part that I'm confused, the part that they use with other cities. I don't think one of those cities that we have a contract with.
You've got to talk about our contract.
No, but, no, this is, he's saying the development process that Bureau Veritas uses with other cities. We're one of those cities that we have a contract with.
We have to adopt it. I'm asking for, so, so, we have to adopt it. I'm asking for us to adopt this process. They have it, we just, to adopt this process, and so that's what the, this is on the agenda for.
Okay, Councilman Jones?
My question is, could we add a commercial in home?
So there is one for homes, but our, this, they have, there's, there's multiple, there's five, six different forms. I just brought this three because this is the first three, because at the time, we had a lot of questions with Panther Hill, and it was commercial. They have one for residential, and they have, they have several things, so, but, but they're, this already exists. If we go, if you go to the City of West, they have about five different things. These are the most pertinent three.
Okay, now, now the item on the agenda, I just want to be clear, and I think it's in line with what Councilman Rowland's saying. Discuss, consider and take action on the city's contract and adopting the development process that Bureau Veritas uses with other cities.
So we could do one of those. You could do one or the other, neither or both. All right. There's two, I see, I read it as two separate issues, so you're going to have a discussion about the existing contract and what that means, and then also development process that, and clearly stated that Veritas uses with other cities.
So what's, yes, Councilman Jones?
I moved that we accept the adoption of the development process that Bureau Veritas uses with other cities, making the proper changes from West to Prairie View and adding a city logo.
Second. Okay, so it's been properly moved and second is that we adopt the development process that Bureau Veritas uses with other cities, and the part about placing our logo with West's logo? Okay, so we're not saying with other cities, we're saying with what the City of West is.
May I suggest something? Just if you'll just adopt the form, the forms in their form as a template, and just, you can tweak them as necessarily be applicable to the City of Prairie View.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Heard the motion or heard the questions? Councilman Randall?
If we're going, if this, this system we're going to implement, why would we implement it with all forms of development, so including residential?
Because it brings up what the discussion of what you just talked about. So this business process in which we have forms going forward, now moving forward, we can add additional forms to that link, but right now, these are the most important, these to the city, which we do have.
My, my thought was we're accepting these and any other Bureau Veritas process forms.
I wouldn't do that, because to me, that's an unlawful delegation. I really, I would like.
So just those three?
Yes. I think y'all need to have them in front of you.
All right, that's my reason. It's time for question. All those in favor say aye. Opposed have the same right? Ayes aye. Okay. Councilman Wallace?
Yeah, so, uh, we all were given today the contract with Bureau Veritas. I want to highlight one part of it on, on number nine, if y'all have it. It says standard of care. It says Bureau Veritas represents that the services, findings, recommend, recommendation and/or advice provided to client will be prepared, performed, and rendered in accordance with procedures, protocol, and practices ordinarily exercised by professionals in Bureau Veritas profession for use of similar assignments and prepared under similar condition at the same time and locality. Uh, so the reason why I bring that up is because I know we've been having issues with the Panther Hill to talk about documentation of the, of the building, of the inspection of the building. This says that it should, that the services, finding, recommendation or, and/or advice provided to client will be prepared, performed, and rendered. So even under the contract, whenever, you know, we've had issues in terms of asking, um, whoever the building and fire inspector to come to provide, so this clearly states that they have the information, they should have all the documentation in which we ask, you know, for any project, and that the biggest issue comes from bringing them, it is actually bringing them to the meeting, which as, you know, I said before, that they will only come if, you know, they said specifically the mayor asked them to come, and, you know, lately, hasn't been on the agenda, so we couldn't have been able to ask for these documents over again, but I'm just saying it is here, that they should have, you know, the documents that, you know, us as a city that we need, it should be there.
Totally agreed, and, and you may not catch the name, but a little earlier, Councilman Rowland called Chris Haver. Chris Haver is a Bureau Veritas inspector, and Councilman Rowland identified him as being in this room, so we can't say they haven't come with, it was a few weeks ago, but anyway. No, we're, we're, we're good. You, you pointed out it's in the document.
I mean, we haven't discussed or considered or suggested.
Yes.
We're supposed to be going through this, and I just got it today, so hopefully we'll be, you'll give us some time to be able to go through it more thoroughly. I guess to reiterate on what Councilman Wallace had just, just talked about, um, most any third-party ordered contractor for this city does have all the information we need. The process is that they give the information to the mayor, and whether we get the, receive or get the information is something different. Mr. Haver did come to the City of Prairie View on your request, Councilman Wallace, not the mayor's request. And from, from, after that happened, they haven't been back here because the mayor told them not to. And so I, I would ask that, so, so, again, not to get personal, that we also, we understand the process. A third-party reports to the mayor. Now, I'm saying this so everyone understands the process. It's, it's, it's on us to get the information from the mayor as far as council to be able to make proper decisions on the contract. This contract is dated 2015. I'm not sure when Bureau Veritas contract is up for review. One of the questions, the reason why we asked for this contract is that Bureau Veritas was just doing plan review. We had our city engineer, who is no longer with us and has not been with us over a month and a half, who was looking, reviewing some documents, the actual plan review would be done by our third-party, which is Bureau Veritas, because we didn't have a full-time person, and we went into a contract with them, as you see in 2015. From that, we were, they were doing plan review documents on structures. We had a, a fire marshal at the time who was doing inspections, and we had an outside person who was doing inspections. Bureau Veritas offers that service, as you see in the contract, but in this contract, we didn't use them for those services. It's, it happened recently where we started to use some of the services that they were offered, it's just like an attorney or anyone else. Hey, I may do all these things, you're only using me for these two things, but you can do thing number three and four as well. And so the reason why this is important is because we wanted to know where we at currently in the City of Prairie View, and this question is for JJ. In our expenses to whether it be Bureau Veritas or, in our, in our bills, will have we been invoiced from Bureau Veritas as far as their, and what they do? So it's one thing to say I've been invoiced to do regularly, come in and be the attorney for this meeting, but if we have a special meeting or something in addition to that, you will charge us on top of that. Bureau Veritas, if they're going to do fire inspection, this is what they would do in addition to, and I wanted to know, so when we look at this contract, if we've been used, since we've been using Bureau Veritas, Bureau Veritas for, since 2015, and we've kind of extended this contract, I think it says, I think your name is on here, Mr. Mayor, in 2016, David Allen, um, as far as some attachments, part of, part of it is who are we using for fire inspection, because, you know, in the conversation, we took, we not using Bureau Veritas and we using another group. And so I want to be very clear on, in the contract with Bureau Veritas, who are we using, and what is our process moving forward?
Does, does your piece show fire?
Yes, on the back page, page two, you wrote your names.
Says signed by Mayor.
And we've been using Bureau Veritas as well as, and, and let me, let me back up, make sure you really understand, since you want to know. Bureau Veritas has fire inspectors, is, is it okay, we're still on the contract?
Sure.
Okay. Bureau Veritas has fire inspectors out of Fort Worth, San Antonio, Beaumont, and sometimes Houston, am I saying that right? Chief? And when Bureau Veritas is short here, they, like a few other third-parties, have not been providing us with adequate service, and when they are short and things need to continue in the city, when we have someone who's duly licensed and does training and all this other stuff right here, Mr. Herschel, their fire inspector, I think he's out of Houston, but he was out for an inordinate amount of time, and life does not stop for him no more than it stops for me if I can't make it here. So my, my job, and maybe that's what we're talking about, my job is to make the city run, and in case you don't understand what that means, if this person can't come in and perform, no more than our city attorney resign, we have someone sitting in on that. That's how things work. So we've been using Bureau Veritas, and again, it's just incredible, because you're speaking like you don't know the Bureau Veritas process, when they went through this with you and you were involved in bringing them on board. I didn't simply following what you gave me to work with, Councilman. Now, if there's some things in that contract and process that have changed, fine, and so be it, but Bureau Veritas has been used at every available opportunity that they have someone available. If Mr. Herschel is doing all of Houston for Bureau Veritas, who has 60,000 employees in 140 different countries, if they can't accommodate us, we're going to get someone who can. And that's what we've been doing. So Bureau Veritas, their contract, we've been following it to that extent, and if there are specifics, we can address those. Councilman Wallace?
So a couple of things, you keep mentioning, especially with Herschel Lee, that he's been busy, but last time I talked to Herschel Lee, he said he wasn't even contacted through Fort Worth, saying that he needed to do an inspection on Panther Hills, and he said that you haven't reached out to him either. I've called you, we had a phone conversation, and I emailed you on August 21st, saying specifically that the building and fire inspector only come off of a mayor request, and I think I made it very clear through the email, yet when I talked to Chris, uh, uh, Mr. Haver, he said he was not requested. It wasn't even, hey, I was busy, I couldn't come. It was literally, I was not requesting. Now, with Christopher Haver, the interesting is, me and Christopher Haver, he came on me because I asked him whatever, but it wasn't on the agenda. You tried to have him talk during one of the departmental reports, but he said even after that, he didn't want to go in depth because it wasn't on the agenda. Now, me and Mr. Haver, we had contact on a daily basis. We, we called each other, emailed, but funny, whenever it was coming for the special meeting, all of a sudden, he doesn't answer me. He doesn't answer my calls, I text him, there are emails even to this day. And, and what I found out, and G. Bordeaux may be able, if this is right or wrong, have you seen Christopher Haver at Panther Hills? Because, I mean, you've been out there, you know, doing the good work. Have you seen Christopher Haver?
I haven't, I haven't seen him.
Okay, so you haven't seen Christopher Haver anytime recently, so.
No, sir.
Herschel, so Herschel Lee is not being requested, Christopher Haver hasn't been there in a while. So the reason why we bring these things up, you know, about Bureau Veritas, is just for a sense of accountability.
Do you know who Ms. Danielle Rogers is?
Yes, sir.
She's been at Panther Hill, she's Chris Haver's supervisor, and she's the one training him in plumbing, because he doesn't have his plumbing license, so if you haven't seen him, maybe you want to find out if she's been, because she's been signing off on the documents. Go ahead, Councilman Jones.
Is there something that basically we could put in place? Because we could say that, okay, let's say the city stopped, and the city doesn't stop, but we don't even reach out to these sources in which offered across this contract to say like, we must have proof before going out to different parties to ask them to come do service in which the contract already allows us to.
We should be, well, we, we have, that's the point of this conversation.
Hold on, Mr. Councilman.
No, I mean, I, I think you're maybe attacking that a little differently. I mean, the contract is simply just to give you the city through the mayor, currently as ready, you know, as, as y'all do business, to utilize their services when needed. It's terminable, it will, it's, you know, all you have to do is give them notice 30 days and they're not working for anymore. You could put some of those kind of safeguards in the contract, but it's, to me, it sounds more like you have a policy problem with the mayor giving y'all information.
Mr. Andrew?
It's yes and no. Part of that is, we, we're, we have adopted, that we accepted this contract with Bureau Veritas, so Bureau Veritas is our third-party, just like, let's say, Austin Olson is our current attorney. The mayor has circumvented this process and brought in, for example, an additional attorney didn't come to city council and says that they attorneys, they got license, we're going to use them. And we're simply saying, Mr. Mayor, we have a contract with the company to do this service. If you have an additional person who you want to execute this because there's a backlog, you need to come back to council or let us know what's going on, and that's what's happened. If you have an additional person who you want to execute this because there's a backlog, you need to come back to council or let us know what's going on, and that's what's happened. Miss, so when we brought this up, when the mayor didn't want Chief Bordeaux to do the inspections, he says, you're not qualified, and we're gonna use this comp, Bureau Veritas, uh, Mr. Lee. But when Mr. Lee gave a, a, when we didn't get all the information and the, the, uh, project didn't pass, then we circumvented who we've been using and went with another, a third party, another third party. And we're saying that we have no contract with this third party in reference to this process, so we're back simply just reviewing the contract. The City of Prairie View's third-party contractor for plan review and for fire is Bureau Veritas. There is no intermediate and no, no other person, we currently don't have a city engineer. And we're saying that if this is what we've signed, both he signed this in two thousand, tw- twenty sixteen, and the other mayor signed in twenty fifteen, that this is who we have. He hasn't brought to council, uh, any additional type of contract, and the one he did, we voted it down. And so, to use a, another third party, when the third party said that, you know, whatever comments they make, 'cause again, I don't wanna make this, they, we voted it down. And so, we're saying that this is the company we're using, Bureau Veritas, we need to be using them in its entirety, unless.
Hold, hold, hold on, hold on, we got somebody else.
Uh, I guess my question is for JJ, so, we have a, we have a contract where we're paying Bureau Veritas to, uh, complete these services. And under the, under that contract includes fire inspection, so my question is, where are we getting the money? Where's the money coming out of to pay Chief Bordeaux or the third party that we're, that we're paying?
It's on the same line item, inspection.
Under inspection?
Inspection, right.
But should, shouldn't all, shouldn't the line item be what we're paying Bureau Veritas in that contract? 'Cause in our, in our contracts, like, for example, for the city attorney, uh, there are only two line items that are separate, on what you do from municipal court, and then what they do for, for.
For B.
For city, for, for B, and then for the city, but those, that's because those funds come from something different, they come from different entities. But everything that he does for the city, the city in general, as far as general legal stuff, comes out of the same line items for legal. So wouldn't the line item for Bureau Veritas include all of this, and then, so that means, that, that funding that is included in that contract, everything that we're going, that we're giving outside of the contract has to come from a different line item?
Uh, Mr. Johnson, would you, would you simply tell them who pays for these inspections?
You know? It's a pass-through expense, that's what.
It's a pass-through expense, it's not coming from the city, someone else pays it.
It's, I don't see, y'all dictate what the budget looks like, if you wanna split out that line item to have Bureau Veritas and then other expenses, all you gotta do is tell them, and it's part of this budget, budget process, and y'all, y'all do that moving forward.
But the pass-through, and it's not coming from us, it's paid by the person who needs the inspection. The permit process, the permit fee is the fee that you're referring to, and it simply goes through us to Bureau Veritas with.